Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Stephen Chambers is with New Hope Christian Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilwoman Salyer, she'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. O God of all peoples, whose favor sweetens every relation and whose wisdom is desirable in all conditions, we seek your presence as this meeting of civic leaders convenes to consider the affairs of this community. Guide all present here today in the administration of government as those charged and challenged with decision-making processes representing the citizens of this city. We pray for peace, prosperity, and the possibilities of a bright future as we continue to place trust in your divine guidance. As those elected as servants of the citizenship, may we be a blessing to others with unique gifts of leadership. In all things, we give you thanksgiving and praise, God of grace and God of glory. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. July is fast approaching, and July is Park and Recreation Month across the country. And so, we've asked some members of our Parks and Recreation Department to come here along with some children who benefit from our Parks Department. And we have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerks to get started reading it while we get settled.
Whereas July is National Park and Recreation Month, and parks and recreation programs are a vital part of communities across America, including Oklahoma City. Whereas the Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Department provides green spaces and dynamic facilities and programs so citizens can obtain a high quality of life contributing to the overall well-being of the community, its economy, and culture. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs provide recreational exercise and wellness opportunities to aid citizens with disease prevention by encouraging healthy habits and exercise and improving the overall well-being of citizens. Parks and Recreation Programs contribute to economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction, and retention of businesses and employees, and crime reduction. Whereas Parks and Recreation Lands contribute positively to the environment by improving air and water quality, protecting groundwater, providing vegetative buffers, and producing sustainable habitats for wildlife. Whereas our Parks and Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, allowing children and adults to connect with nature through primitive and manicured landscapes. Whereas Oklahoma City recognizes the invaluable contributions of employees and volunteers who help people relax, connect with others, and enjoy the many benefits of Parks and Recreation Programs and facilities. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim July 2015 as Park and Recreation Month in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation for our Parks Department officials. And, uh, let's see. It's a proclamation, Doug. I think you should say a few words about Park and Recreation Month.
I appreciate it, Your Honor. Obviously, the Parks and Recreation Department in the City of Oklahoma City celebrates its worth to the community every month, but we picked July out. It's a nationwide activity. We want people to get out into their parks, enjoy a healthy outing, whether it's just sitting amongst the green trees and the grasses or participating in one of the great recreation programs that our staff provides to the community either through athletics or recreation programming at the center. So, we want to thank you, Your Honor, for honoring us this way, and the City Council for supporting that activity. And please, get out and use your parks. That's what they're there for. It is about quality of life.
We have a number of green spaces together. Of course, there are neighborhood parks and regional parks. There's the myriad botanical gardens, which is on display for the entire city to enjoy. And we have a zoo that is, in many ways, a part of our park system and our civic offering. So, I know we want to show one more round of applause for the Parks Department, but as they leave, just know how much the Council and I appreciate the work you all do. We're so proud of the Parks Department. It's come a long way, and you all are the reason why. So, let's show our appreciation. There you go. Thank you, sir. Also this morning, we're getting an update on the Latino Community Development Agency, and Dr. Raul Font is here to give us that update. Dr. Font, thanks for coming back down to see us.
Thank you very much, and good morning, Mayor Cornett, honorable members of the City Council, and our visitors today. Would like to change hats here for a minute and thank the city for the partnership. Before I started with Latino Community Development Agency, I was the Assistant Superintendent over Santa Fe South Schools. And because of the graciousness of this council with coordination to open the Young Armory, I invite all of you, July the 16th. This facility would open as a zero-to-five school with Santa Fe South. And thanks to you, and thanks to Innismuch Foundation for this honor. And so, if you have, if you want to see the product of what you do, just go out there and see a lot of little kids. When Chris Brewster talks about getting them straight out of the womb, these would be kids from eight months to five years old going to be in that armory. So, we thank you very much for that.
Great.
What I would like to do this morning is just share with you thoughts about Latino Community Development Agency. I was a founding member of LCDA. I hired Pat Fennell. We really thought she was going to die in that position and not put us in this situation today. Pat has since left. And I know that there was a presentation to you in 2012. And I just want to update you a little bit of what our new plans are and see if we could partner in any of these plans with the city. Primarily, we would like to share with you on the second sheet where we have the mission. For those that do not know much about LCDA, it's to enhance the quality of life of Latino community through education, leadership, service, and advocacy. What I have found in the city is that there is an enormous amount of Hispanics that are coming to the city. We are now opening lately our arms to a group of Puerto Rican teachers that are coming in for the Oklahoma City Public Schools, which is a, even though we are, I'm Puerto Rican, we are present in Oklahoma. This will be a very interesting merge, just like the other Hispanic populations, if you, if they feel comfortable, if they feel welcome. You will have many other Puerto Ricans following. And this is a white-collar group of individuals that are coming, different from our south-side blue-collar workers. But we also have, in the north side of our city, a group of Central and South Americans that are coming in. Again, white-collar workers, and they all claim different types of skills. And therefore, one of the original thoughts about the Latino Community Development Agency was serving all these populations. And as we have moved away from the south side and being, and seeing pockets of Latinos all over the city, one of the original plans was for, to have satellites, just like Variety Clinic has and other organizations. And so, we are looking very carefully in expanding and making satellites in the different pockets of Latino agency, from the Latino agency to the community. And the north side, if you see the schools in the north side, of course, Oklahoma City Public Schools with 50% or plus out of 45,000 students are Latinos. And that predominantly African-American Asian area in northwest Classen and Taft is not predominantly Hispanic. So, we're looking at something in the north side in that area to work with these populations. But we've also had some contacts from El Reno, Canadian County, El Reno, Kingfisher, Hydro, Mustang, Yukon. There's another pocket of Hispanics there that we also feel that it needs some attention. And we will be approaching those cities as well. And of course Tulsa. Of course, Tulsa's Tulsa. And we are opening conversations with them about how we could help them establish, because we don't want to go that far out there when there are leaders in Tulsa that could take care of the Latinos in that area. But I also want to make sure that the Council understands that even though it says Latino Community Development Agency, we open our facilities to anyone within our county. So, we serve all populations in our, in our facilities because our grants and our, the different endowments that we have, it's for the people that live within our areas. So, if you follow the last page, we have some goals. We have five goals that we're looking at. But the ones that I would really like to call your attention is to number two and number four. Goals number two and number four. Number two primarily is rehabbing our building. We really would like, I have, I listened to the 2012 presentation, and it seems like there was an agreement that that facility needed to be rehabbed. And so, we are looking at not moving from that facility because it's a staple in that community, and we really feel that that's where it needs to be. And so, but it's a 120-year-old building, and it looks like it too. So, we are trying to see how we are going to do a campaign to make sure that this facility stays there, maybe expand a little bit, and keep our partners with us. But the other, and then of course, the satellites, maybe start at the north side and then expand from there. And these are five-year plans. We would like to share this with the city to see if there's anything that the city could help us with as we look at these plans. The second is, and was spoken at 2012 when you were here, there is a green space right in front of the agency that we see mowing every single day. And it's been there for the last five, six years. We are thinking, if you have ever visited a city, a Hispanic city, all the cities in Latin America have a little, what we call placita. It's a staged area that people could come and do cultural activities, have art, and then have music, and they still also could work as a recreational facility where there would be a little track and maybe some goals for the kids to work with. But it's right now wasted space that is front of our facility that we feel that if we could acquire it, we could work with different leaders and maybe develop it and have it right in front of us and share it with the community. So, these are the basic, are two major activities. We, of course, you've seen the numbers. I would be remiss as a college professor not to direct you to a reading. This is the latest reading that I think that personifies what the Latino community has in, how the community, the community has impacted any city that they've been into. It's called the ABCs and Aña of America's Cultural Evolution: A Primer on the Growth, on the Growing Influence of the Hispanic Latinos and Mestizos in the USA. Very radical, but very good statistics. It tells you what happens when they come into the communities. And I know that you have done your homework, because I could, I feel very comfortable. I've been in Oklahoma since '81, and I will never leave. This is home. And so, I feel the same thing is happening with the Latino community as they are present here. And so, if you are interested, I would share this with you. I know that you have a long meeting, so that's really a presentation to you. I would welcome you to come to our facilities, tour it, look at what we're doing. We have still over 25 programs with the Latino Community Development Agency and growing. So, I'm pretty well-open now for any questions. And again, I thank the Council and the Mayor for, please, having me here this morning.
Thank you, Dr. Font. Any questions at this time?
All right.
We look forward to working with you on this five-year program. And thanks for all you're doing out there.
You guys have a good day.
All right. We're now on item 3B of the Office of the Mayor, and we need a resolution to appoint Donald O'Kiffin as a municipal judge. All right. Cast your votes on item 3B. It passes unanimously. We are pleased that Dr. Kiffin is in the building this morning and is ready to get sworn in. Dr. Kiffin, if you would just step to the microphone and first tell us who you brought with us here today.
Thank you very much. May it please the Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having the confidence in me for doing a great job for the citizens of Oklahoma City. Today, I brought my wife, Sherri Kiffin, and Angela Morris. They are really two most important women in my life at this time. They show really what it means to do service, and hopefully, I can continue in that tradition with them. Seven years, seven, eight years ago, my wife was diagnosed with polycystic kidney disease. It's strictly genetic. You don't know where it comes from, but it chokes the kidneys. And out of the blue, necessarily, a person 20 feet from my wife was more willing to give than we were to receive. And that was Angela Morris, and she donated a kidney to my wife. That's the ultimate in service, and that's what I want to bring to the citizens of Oklahoma City.
I. State your name and repeat after me.
I, Donald Kiffin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As municipal judge for the City of Oklahoma City, to the best of my ability.
As municipal judge for the City of Oklahoma City, to the best of my ability. Again, I would like to thank the Mayor, thank Council for their particular support, and it's my duty to do the Oklahoma standard of service, honor, and kindness. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
We're going to take a picture? Congratulations.
Thank you, City Council, again.
We're now on item four of the Council Agenda. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the journal for June 16th, and item 4B is to approve the journal for June 2nd and June 9th. Is there a motion? Comments or questions about the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Now it's time for a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I have several. First of all, on page 18 of the agenda, item number 9H1. Item C is in Charlie, 1704 North Lynn Avenue. We need to strike that item to re-notify the owner. Item D is in David, 8900 North McMillan Avenue. Need to strike that one. Owner has been, owner has secured. At 25, item K is in King, 2561 Northwest 16th Street. Strike this item to re-notify the owner. Item N is in Noah, 3321 Southwest 49th Street. Strike this item. Owner has secured. On page 19, item 9I1. Item number D is in David, 1704 North Lynn Avenue. Strike to re-notify the owner. Item F is in Frank, 8900 North McMillan Avenue. Strike. Owner has secured. Item L 20, I'm sorry, item I, 2561 Northwest 16th Street. Strike to re-notify. And item S is in Sam, 3321 Southwest 49th Street. Strike. Owner has secured. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Item 6 begins a series of revocable permit requests. Item 6A is a request from Friends of Multi-Sport, Inc. They want to hold 24 the hard way in October out on Bluff Creek Park. Is there anyone here representing this organization today? All right, it's out in Ward 8. Mark?
The park's a great place. If you haven't been there, I'd encourage people to go to Bluff Creek Park and I, for approval of the revocable permit.
All right, cast your votes. And item 6A passes unanimously. Item 6B is a revocable permit with the Water Trust and Friends of Multi-Sport, Inc., to hold the Redman Triathlon and Half Triathlon coming up this September in and around Lake Hefner. Goes through wards 1, 2, and 8. Is anyone here representing the triathlon in the building? All right, how about a motion then for Mark? You want to handle this one too?
So moved.
All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. And then item 6C is a revocable right-of-way permit with David Wood to hold the Redman Triathlon, September 26th, in Lake Hefner's area between Ward 1 and Ward 8.
Again, I'd move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on item 6C. It passes unanimously. We'll hope for nice, cool weather for the triathletes on September 26th. Oh, recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are seven items here. Is there a motion in a second? All right, and I think Doug Dollar is going to do a presentation for us on item F. This has to do with the OC MFA budget for fiscal year 2015-2016. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Just have a few notes to pass on about the Municipal Facilities Authority budget. This is, we have both the MFA and the PPA budget on for adoption today. The MFA budget totals $93.5 million for FY '16, and some of the major functions that are a part of the MFA include our health insurance, that's for our active employees, that's over 61% of the total for the MFA budget, that's $57 million. The second-largest area within the MFA budget is our Workers' Compensation Fund that handles all the workers' compensation for city employees, is that $13 million. Then there are a number of other areas within the budget as well in the MFA, advanced capital funding for geo-bond projects, our property and liability insurance, our unemployment insurance that we pay, parks and gas, oil, and royalties, and a number of other areas. Again, $93.5 million is the total there. When we look at the revenues that come into the MFA, the biggest single source is the insurance contributions from both the city for its portion as well as the employees that contribute to the health insurance, and then transfers from various funds that help support those operations, and then fund balance at 11%. When we look at how the money is spent in the MFA, the largest piece is on other services and charges, again, those insurance premiums, those other contracts. It's 93% of the budget. You can see just a little bit there, then goes to transfers to other funds, capital outlay, materials, and reserves. So, again, $93.5 million is the budget for the Municipal Facilities Authority. One of the reasons that we have the Municipal Facilities Authority and the Public Property Authority, OCPPA, is to provide for those multi-year contracts, things like our contracts with the health insurance companies and that sort of stuff. When we do those in the city funds, we have to have all the money upfront to be able to encumber those funds. When we enter into contracts in the trust, we can pay that as we go. So, example, health insurance, again, as those premiums are collected, we pay that to the insurance company. Whereas if we did that in a city fund, we'd have to have all the money upfront when we entered into a contract, and that's just not feasible on certain things like that. So, be happy to answer any questions you have about the MFA.
All right, any questions? All right, Doug, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Ready to vote the MFA? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCMFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are seven items, and we have a couple of presentations. First, Kenny Sudle is here. Kenny's going to lead us through an explanation on some of the bonds we're going to sell for the fairgrounds.
Absolutely. Good morning. Just as a reminder, back in 2004, the voters passed a hotel tax that was 5.5%. 3% of that is dedicated to fairgrounds improvement. So, in 2005, the original bond issue was done that did the bulk of the major renovations out at the state fairgrounds. So, the resolution before you today is seeking authorization for the 2015 bonds, which really are for two purposes. One is to refinance the remaining bonds from the 2005 bond issue. There's about $44 million worth of bonds outstanding, and so, that's just to refinance those to provide annual savings. The other, we estimate that'll save about $450,000 a year.
And clearly, the reason for that savings is because we'll receive a lower interest rate.
Absolutely.
In today's environment than we did when we sold them originally in 2005.
Yeah, the average interest rate that's remaining on the bonds is about 5.3%. We're estimating somewhere around 3.5% that we could, that we think we can get in the current market on those bonds. The second piece that these bonds will accomplish is to get out $20 million of new money to do some improvements out at the fairgrounds, which include things like some paving, improvements to parking and RV spaces, roof replacements, interior refurbishments, and electrical plumbing, HVAC upgrades at some of the existing buildings. So, once we complete this process, we think that our debt service is going to be around $6.4 million a year. The fairgrounds portion of the hotel tax in FY 2015, we collected about $7.9. So, we feel like this is conservative, and it's, it would allow for an additional million and a half each year of cash to be used on just regular capital maintenance and repairs and things like that. So, if all goes as planned, we think that this would add approximately $16 million of total debt to the debt outstanding, and that's because we believe that this is a premium market where we would get more cash than the amount of bonds that we sell. And the bond sale would be scheduled for mid-July, and we would try to close this July 30th. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. You said the yearly debt service is going to be $6.4 million. What was it before this?
That's a great question. So, right now in FY '15, the total debt service for all bonds outstanding is about just under $6.4. So, we believe that, our estimates are that after we complete this transaction, the total debt service would be just over $6.4, so maybe about $100,000 a year of extra debt service.
And I know right now that our debt service is servicing more interest than it is principal. When do we foresee that the principal being paid down quicker than the interest?
With the current bonds that are outstanding, it would be, I believe, 2021 that we kind of hit that point where we're paying more on principal than interest. And we have the 2005 bonds outstanding, the 2007, the 2011, and there's a very small bond bond issue from 2012, which is part of this. We're planning on paying that off with cash.
Okay. And then, as far as fees and rentals for the state fair, I think that we haven't raised those in five years, if my understanding is correct. Have we, do we have some sort of process that we're going through to see if we should raise them, you know, being competitive with other facilities like ours?
I'd have to defer to Tim O'Toole from State Fair, Inc. on that, too.
Thank you. Councilman, we are reviewing that process. We try to keep the rates as reasonable as possible for the users, but at the same time, their costs keep escalating. So we're due to put in a rate increase. It's whether we do it before the building, the large building is completed and the property is a little more put back together, or do we do it after that, that, the project's completed in 2016. But yeah, we're due for a rate increase on the rental of the facilities. We just, we've done some studies on it, and we just haven't put it into effect yet.
So I guess, just as a reminder for the citizens that are watching, in MAPS III, we had a $60 million investment add in the fairgrounds that a very large part of that was going to a 200,000 square foot, brand-new, free-span exhibit space.
Yes, that's correct. It's actually total, close to almost 300,000 square foot building with 200,000 open, clear space for exhibits and trade shows.
And so some of this new money, Tim, that we're talking about in this bond reissue, will go to help refurbish some of the other buildings that are on the fairgrounds.
That's correct. We have five other exhibit buildings, not counting the barns and the arenas. And those exhibit buildings, the, they're about 240,000 square feet. The largest building is the Cox Building at 70,000 square feet. And we did some, that was the old Bubble Building. And we took that air-inflated roof and put a new roof and some new air conditioning on that building in 2007 and in 2011. The other four buildings were built in the 50s, and other than having foam put on their roofs to keep them from leaking in the 1970s and early 80s, they basically have had no refurbishing or any work done on them at all since the mid-1950s.
So as we walk through this, people could expect to see new restroom facilities, new concessions, new roofs, fresh paint.
That's correct. We're going to, we're going to look at all that. The first place we have to look at is, it's not unlike a home, we have to look at the roofs. The roofs are all old and deteriorating in those buildings, and so we need to get those taken care of and get them sealed in, and then we'll be looking at the interior refurbishing of them, as well as some paving and some other improvements on the property.
Thank you.
All right, we have a, we have a motion on the floor. Yeah? I have one other question. What percentage of the hotel sales tax goes to debt service? Do we know that percentage?
Kenny, the fairgrounds portion, right now, it would be about 81% of the tax is going towards debt service.
Is our goal to get that percentage to be going in the other direction?
Yeah, and that's a great question, because actually, that's the direction we've been headed. As the tax grows, that obviously helps that ratio, but another, you know, another issue is we've managed this, tried to manage this closely, and, you know, Tim's been very conservative on just trying to address the basic needs and, you know, it's, this isn't all just niceties we're doing, you know, this is some of the required things. So that's definitely something we're looking at, and we try to continue, you know. As the city's debt manager, I don't like debt, but it's a necessary evil at some point. And, but, you know, Craig and I always look at this stuff and try to find a way to cash fund things if possible. Sometimes it's just not always possible.
Cool, thanks. All right, how about a second on the PPA? Okay, ready to vote? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA. Do we need a presentation on the PPA budget? Yeah, I think I voted prematurely there on item OCPPAF. I have a note here that Doug's going to come back up and help us on the PPA budget that we just approved for 2015.
This can be a very short presentation, though. Yes, so the PPA budget's $44.6 million that we've got proposed for FY16. When we look at the major areas that the PPA budget supports, fairgrounds and the debt service that Kenny just talked about is the biggest area at 30.9%. It's about 13.5 million dollars. Golf courses are the second largest area in the PPA at about 25% of the budget. And then MAPS, contracts, and capital maintenance are 24% in the PPA, and that's where we handle the payments to SMG to manage the Cox and Chesapeake Arena, as well as some of the other capital maintenance items that have been related to the MAPS projects over the years. We also do our third-party natural gas program through the PPA, as well as the Civic Center and Rose State Performing Arts, which was also a contract that was approved as part of the PPA agreement here, so, or PPA docket. When we look at where the revenue comes from, hotel motel tax, of course, supports the debt at the fairgrounds, golf course revenue, transfers from the general fund, and then fund balance, some very, we have a number of miscellaneous sources that add up to about 12%, and then transfers in for about 8%. When we look at how we spend the money in terms of categories, it's much more diverse in the PPA than it was in the MFA. Big piece of that is because the golf courses are in there. We pay for personnel at the golf courses, so that's about 10%, 11% of the budget, but then kind of a little bit of everything, other services and charges, materials, capital outlay, transfers, and then of course, debt service, as we've talked about here. So be happy to answer any questions about the PPA budget.
How'd the PPA budget grow from last year?
In terms of?
Size?
Yeah, the, let me pull up here, the percentages. Really, it's not, let me, I looked at the wrong page here. When we look at it in total, it's actually a slight decrease. It's about $800,000.
Where do you attribute that to?
As I look down through here, the capital reserves is an area where we have some money set aside for projects at the arena that were set aside when the Thunder came in as part of their agreement. And basically, we've been kind of spending that down over the course of time as we set the money aside, and now we're using it, and so that's one of the areas that's decreased there. That's about a million dollars decrease there, just there's less money available in that reserve that's been used for various capital improvements at the arena.
Okay. Any other questions for Doug on the PPA budget? All right, Doug, thank you. All right, we'll adjourn the OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today.
Move it out in a second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on the EAT. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
I would be interested in any consideration.
All right, are there any individual considerations?
Please, Paul.
Okay.
Mayor, we do have a presentation scheduled for item P as in poll. Ken Bryan is here from the Planning Department, Senior Planner. We'll make that presentation.
All right, Larry, you want to comment before or after the presentation?
Well, I was just going to give a brief overview and say that we're introducing this, and the final vote will come on July 21st, and then I'll defer to Ken.
Okay.
Thank you. Ken Bryan, Senior Planner with the City of Oklahoma City's Planning Department. So let me just go over a proposed de-annexation between ourselves and the City of Yukon near Frisco Road and Highway 66. Little bit of purpose and background, we received a request to de-annex a site from the City of Yukon earlier this year. Staff prepared their evaluation. Council's ad hoc annexation/de-annexation committee met in March and approved a recommendation to move the process forward. Planning Commission voted favorably on the recommendation in April. So taking a look at the site location, the site is approximately 250 acres. You can see it here, south of Highway 66, which is Main Street in the City of Yukon, and west of Frisco Road. City of Yukon is fully north and east of the site, and you can, that's City of Oklahoma City there to the south with Interstate 44 across the south portion. Another look with an aerial photograph, so you can get a sense of the, kind of the development pattern in the area. This is a rural portion of Ward three, and it's characterized as such, and it is as you would expect for the many rural portions of Oklahoma City. You can see to the east, City of Yukon is, does have some development near this site. City of Yukon is here, by the way, to talk about their plans for the site, which should be pretty interesting. Quick look at the zoning in both of our jurisdictions. Most of the zoning is agricultural in the City of Oklahoma City. There's a little bit of light industrial activity associated with the highway interchange at Simron Road. The PUD there is also industrial. It's a PUD because it has some other signage and facade requirements. City of Yukon has a lot more going on to the east, as that's part of their urbanized area. The north portion here is Yukon as well, and it is zoned agricultural. Taking a look at Oklahoma City's infrastructure, there's no water or sewer service to the site. The water and sewer lines you see there to the west serve the low-density kind of light industrial components and CEPage Airport. There's no, no long-range plans for the city to extend service to this area. There is a little bit of drainage structure. You can't really see it on this map, but it's just a drainage pipe that goes under Simron Road. Transportation infrastructure, again, I alluded to the rural nature of this area, so you wouldn't expect trails or bike lanes or transit service or those kinds of urban services in this area. There are two interchanges near the site, one at Simron Road in Oklahoma City and one at Garth Brooks Boulevard, which is also Cemetery Road in the City of Yukon. Oklahoma City Police and Fire Response, over the past five years, this shows priority one calls in the area. There's been a few police priority one calls. They have an average response time in this area of 23 minutes. Quite a bit more calls for fire service in the area. They have an average response time of 12 minutes. I believe it's about 85% of these calls are medical, medical aid, or traffic accidents. We're going to talk a little bit about parks. City of Yukon is planning a regional park for the site, which they'll talk about, but Oklahoma City conducted a Parks Master Plan and completed that in 2013. This map is from that plan, and it shows demand, projected demand for future regional parks in our area. So kind of the pink and purple areas show places where there's population or projected population that would be outside the service areas of our existing regional parks. So you can see in the southwest portion of Oklahoma City, there's a need for a regional park, and the site sits close enough to that area that could probably serve a portion of that demand. Looking at city service efficiency, so I've alluded to this previously, but because of the rural nature and the existing infrastructure in the area, it's difficult for Oklahoma City to provide urban services to that area. So you see that police, fire, water, and sewer, which are major services in the area, are relatively difficult to provide. And we talk about efficiency of these services, and when we, when we talk about that, we mean that to increase the service availability or levels of service for those things would require significant investment in infrastructure and operations. Looking at the current comprehensive plan, so this is OKC Plan 2000 to 2020, projects the area for industrial land use designation. That is because of the access to both the airport and the interstate system. We're in the process of adopting a new comprehensive plan, and it projects the area as what we call urban reserve, which means it's suitable for future urbanization once urban level of services are able to be efficiently provided to that area. Both the comprehensive plans, the current one and the one that's under adoption, by the way, support annexation/de-annexation actions that increase efficiency and make it easier to provide services and take care of roadways and those types of things. Just a couple other factors about this site. There's not very much population out there, and most of, most of what is, is in Yukon, where they've, they've urbanized a little bit across Frisco Road to the east. There's approximately 4,000 acres of undeveloped land within a mile of the site with a low-density pattern, and that development rate over the last 20 years, there should be plenty of land to sustain that development pattern over the long term. So that, that indicates that de-annexing a relatively small portion of that wouldn't impact Oklahoma City's ability to continue to develop. Some benefits associated with this action would be that it avoids service duplication, and that's in terms of the park. So you can imagine if Yukon is able to build a significant public amenity, then Oklahoma City would, would be able to avoid building one in the same, in the same area to serve a similar population. Right-of-way responsibility simplified. I believe the city boundary is down the center line of Frisco Road, so half of it's in Oklahoma City, half of it's in City of Yukon. Whenever, given the opportunity, we like to clean that up. Simplifies roadway maintenance, among other things. I believe the same is true with Highway 66 there, and then it's also an ODOT facility, so you have a third entity that's involved. We're working on an agreement, actually, it's been, it's been executed, I believe, with the City of Yukon to facilitate some commercial development. They're going to make some improvements. They can talk about that as well, that'll allow some commercial development in Oklahoma City. Once their facility is completed, you can imagine there'll be increased activity at the interstate interchanges whenever they have events or things like that, so there may be future opportunities associated with those, those assets. There's always a few costs when you look at a project like this. In this case, there's no, no capital cost or anything like that. It's, it's mostly staff costs associated with managing the data. When we change the municipal boundary, there's some things that, that we have to do operationally to, to deal with that. I've got a bullet on here about precedent. Some concern was raised about setting a precedent of just de-annexing any area of Oklahoma City that's not efficient to serve. That's a lot of areas, and I don't believe that's the precedent that we're, that we're looking for here. If you're proposing to have a relatively small portion of land and provide a significant public amenity, then maybe that, maybe we can start a conversation. Looking at next steps, if we move forward from today, the first public hearing on this item will be July 7, and the second hearing and action, July 21, with an effective date of approximately August 22. Well, that'll need to be coordinated with City of Yukon, as they will be undergoing a simultaneous annexation action. I believe, I'm happy to answer any questions, or Yukon's here to talk about their project as well.
Okay, yeah, come on up. I think most of the council's been briefed on this as they kind of move through the process. Good morning. Thanks for coming over.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
We will need your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Sigler, and I'm an attorney for the City of Yukon. My address is 501 West Main, Yukon.
Okay.
We've worked closely with city staff and some of the council members, and I'm here to tell you that your staff has done an outstanding job. We've worked with the City of Oklahoma City on a number of different occasions, and this one has been very pleasant. We have, the City of Yukon has engaged the services of Olson and Associates to help us design our park. We've gone through our public hearings and our meetings with the groups, the soccer groups, the baseball groups, and our plan right now is to put in a significant sports complex with approximately 14 soccer fields, one of which will be a championship field, lighted, some of them will be turf. We're going to have baseball fields, softball fields, and reserve a space for an aquatic center. The City of Yukon, actually, our municipal authority purchased this 253 acres earlier this year, or we may have closed on it last year, for the specific purpose of providing a park. Our city manager and your city manager have been working closely together in order to accommodate this, along with what we call a companion agreement. Check Hall Investment Partners intends to put in a significant retail development within the limits of the City of Oklahoma City at Check Hall and Northwest 10th Street, south of I-40, on the southwest corner. Several years ago, the City of Yukon and the City of Oklahoma City reached an agreement to to, for the City of Oklahoma City to detach and the City of Yukon to annex the south side of 10th Street there. So there were, it's a four-lane concrete road now, but we're working with the City of Oklahoma City. The City of Yukon has executed that companion agreement that goes along with this detachment. And I'm here and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Any questions? Again, we're going to have a public hearing next time we gather for, on this, so there'll be other chances for the council to check in. All right, looks like we're good to go. Thanks again. I'm glad the relationship's working so well.
Thank you, me too.
All right. Ken, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Larry, do you want to make any other comments about this?
It appears to be a win-win situation with no unintended consequences, and if people can point that out between now and the next hearing that comes up on July 21st, we'll take it into consideration. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Any other council comments on the consent docket? Do we have a motion, Francis? All right, we're ready to vote then. Cast your votes. Consent docket passes unanimously. And we're on to the concurrence docket. All right, we have a motion in a second.
Yes, Mayor, we need to strike item O.
Okay. All right, Francis is letting me know we need to strike item O.
Water Trust didn't have enough votes to prove it, so we'll consider it activated.
Okay. Still needs to go back through Water Trust. So how about a motion then to strike item O from, from the council agenda? All right, let's vote on the striking item O. An item O is struck from the agenda. We already have a motion in a second now on the rest of the concurrence docket. Any comments or questions from council? All right, cast your votes on the concurrence. It passes unanimously. Item nine begins a series of items that require a separate vote. Will begin with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Two. It's an ABC issue at 2920 Northwest 63rd Street. Ed?
There's no protest approved by Planning Commission. I'd move for approval.
All right, anybody here to talk on this item today? All right, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward Six at 1217 Northwest 5th Street. It's currently R3 medium density, and it would become an I2 moderate industrial district if approved. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone here today to speak on this matter? This is a, an opportunity to provide parking for business at the same address. There were no protests at the Planning Commission, and by creating this paved parking, it will allow a vacant warehouse to be put back into service, so good opportunity. I would move approval.
All right, cast your votes on 9A2. It passes unanimously. 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward Four at 11201 South Sunny Lane Road. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become a new planned unit development if approved. Pete?
Has anyone signed up to speak? Be protesters. I'd move approval.
Second.
All right, we're voting on item 9A3, and it passes unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward Seven at 2801 Northeast 50th Street. It's currently has a single, a series of, of current zonings. R1 single-family, I2 moderate industrial. There's a PUD in there. It is a UCD Northeast Gateway Urban Conservation District, and has also been a special permit to the PUD. So pretty complicated series of zoning cases on this property. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is to facilitate operation management and future growth of the softball Hall of Fame. I do want to take the time out to thank the softball, excuse me, softball Hall of Fame for everything that you all do, and especially being a community partner in the new relationship that, for example, that you all have developed with Millwood Public School. So I just want to say thank you for being a community member. And a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend the World Women, the Women's World College Series, and I had the chance to see firsthand how important the softball Hall of Fame is. With that, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. What are your guys' plans for the, for the rezoning?
I'm Bob Thompson, attorney for, at 6301 Waterford Boulevard. This is Craig Kress, Executive Director of ASA. ASA is the national governing body for the sport of amateur softball, so it's a great distinction. It's not just limited to Oklahoma, but the entire nation. And this is some expansion of ball fields and facilities to support ball fields, improvement of restrooms and food facilities. This is a partnership between ASA, which owns a portion of this land, and the City of Oklahoma City, who owns a portion of it, and then leases that portion to. In fact, this application was jointly prepared by your planning staff and ASA and staff to get this on the table to date. Probably nothing would have changed if we'd have just built the buildings and kept going under the hodgepodge of zoning that existed, but this is an effort initiated by your city planning staff, so let's get all this under the right umbrella, the right PUD, to make sure we're all operating on a known quantified set of rules. If you just read the first paragraph, section 1.0, the introduction of this PUD application, you'll probably know everything you need to know about this. And I want to remind you that we are a part of your park system. We're across the street from the zoo, and right down the street from other park properties. This property is used a lot. In fact, this weekend, there is a gold qualifier event, starting on Friday, going through the weekend. I'd like to invite every one of you to come out, and in fact, every weekend for the remainder of the summer, there's going to be a softball event of one nature being conducted on this. As you note, the softball, the World Series of Women's Softball is conducted here, and because of the improvements that the City of Oklahoma City and ASA have committed to work together to do, and that the citizens of Oklahoma City have helped finance, that's now a binding commitment. They will be here every year through 2035. So we're going to become, for women's softball, what Omaha is to men's baseball, and this is the place that the women are going to look forward to coming to every year. In addition to that, we have at least one international event here every year, and we're softball teams from all over the world come in here for the World Cup of Softball. And it's a great sport. They've got great facilities, and we would literally invite every one of you to come out. Probably most of you are already familiar with it in some degree, but it's something that City of Oklahoma City can be proud of. It's one of my most fun clients, because we really, it's just, there's something special about representing a not-for-profit that engages in fun, and that's what these guys do. And this is Craig Kress, who is, is the new Executive Director, and he has a staff that overlooks all this, and they do a great job running this facility. Craig?
I just want to say thank you to the council, Mayor, for what you've done for our facility. It has made us a world-class facility, even more so than what we were. This year, we're hosting 18 countries in the month of August for a Junior World Championship. So it's events like that that you, that you folks have made possible, and the citizens of Oklahoma City have made possible. So on behalf of ASA USA Softball, thank you very much.
And we're very proud of what you guys do. Craig, thank you.
Mayor? I'd like to make a comment if I could. I don't think there's a better example of a partner, partnership than ASA and Oklahoma City. I mean, it goes back to Stanley Draper Jr., back years and years and years ago, when land was acquired to build the facility here in the Hall of Fame here during the '87, when we hosted the Olympic Festival here. The city made another substantial investment. It's, it's paid off. I mean, I don't think there's an event comparable to the Women's College World Series. There is one big difference between what goes on in Omaha and what goes on in Oklahoma City. And the difference is that women's fast pitch softball is going to be in the Olympics again, and it's not likely that baseball is ever going to get back. As a, as a big-time baseball fan, I regret that a little bit, but, but it's obvious to me that the move is underfoot to put the women's softball back in the World Series, and, and I think that's a major accomplishment, and it can't be, I can't think of anything better that we could do in Oklahoma City than continue to support it, because when that happens, when the, when women's fast pitch goes back in the World Series, in the Olympics, the boom that we've always seen in softball is going to recur all over again. So.
And we hope you're prophetic. This partnership began, or this facility began with the opening of the Hall of Fame Stadium in 1973, and it's been continuously growing and expanding ever since. It's just been a fantastic partnership, and we really appreciate the, the help that's, that's been given.
All right, James?
You said something about there's a, an event scheduled for every weekend for how long?
The remainder of the summer.
Over through the summer?
Yeah, we play, we average 32 events a year.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two events a year. We start sometime either the first weekend of March or the second weekend, depending on when Mother Nature will allow that to happen, and then we conclude about the third or fourth weekend in October, when we close out with our Oklahoma High School state championships for their fast pitch. There's six divisions there. So we, we do our best to have every weekend scheduled. We do take a weekend off every now and then, just so our grass can get a little break. Our field superintendent's a little picky about that at times.
All right.
You watch the schedule, and you see that when the border clash is conducted there, when the Canadian slow pitch people come in to play the American slow pitch, just want to park a long ways away from the back fence, because these guys can hit balls out of baseball stadiums, much less softball. It's a great event to watch.
Great. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 9A4, and it passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward Five at 1008 Southwest 81st Street. It's currently R4 general residential, and it'd be a new SUD if approved. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for a development for a senior independent living facility. It was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. There were no protests. Francis, is there anyone?
No one.
Okay, since no one's here to sign up, I recommend approval. Oh, I'm sorry. Bob, have they accepted the technical evaluation items?
Yes.
Okay, yes, so I would move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A5, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward Eight at 2121 Northwest 145th Street. It's currently a PUD, and it would become a SUD if approved. Mark?
It's a telecommunications tower. There are no protests that I'm aware of, no emails, no phone calls. Planning Commission recommended approval, and I'd move to approve.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Anyone here to speak on this item today? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 9A7 is a zoning case in Ward Three at 4745 Council Heights Road. It's currently I2 moderate industrial, and it'd be a new simplified planned unit development if approved. Larry?
Anybody signed up?
No, sir.
This is just to add that the ability to have some wine served as part of the manufacturing out there is a incidental use. Planning Commission approved it. I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A7. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A8 is a zoning case in Ward Six at 1819 West Main Street. It's currently I2 moderate industrial, and it'd be a new simplified planned unit development if approved. Meg?
Yeah, this is a great project. I see that the applicant is here, Architect Rand Elliott. This is a work-live concept, which is sort of new in Oklahoma City, but very appropriate for this area. There were no protests at the Planning Commission. It was unanimously approved with technical evaluations specifically related to signs, and Bob, that was all agreed to. If anybody signed up, Francis, to speak, I would move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A8. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B is a ordinance, and if approved, would close a couple of 15-foot water easements out in the Quell Creek area. Mark, you okay with this?
Yes, I'm okay. This is a commercial site, which is being converted to a self-storage facility. No protest letters, no emails, no calls. Planning Commission approved it, and I'd move for approval.
All right, we're voting on 9B, and it passes unanimously. Item 9C was deferred last week, and this is a special permit that would allow automobile sales to occur at 2801 North MacArthur Boulevard. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Bob, my information is that the easement was submitted, accepted?
It has been, yes.
And so we're ready to go?
Yes, sir.
There were no protests? This is to allow automobile sales? Thank you for indulging us and letting us defer and get the easement situation cleared up. Move for approval.
All right, we're voting on 9C, and it passes unanimously. Item 9D is a couple items that come to us from the Traffic Commission. They're both in Ward Seven. The first would create a parking space for the physically disabled on the south side of East Sheridan. John stepped out. I'm guessing he's okay with this. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay, we're voting on item 9D. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 9D2 is to establish a two-hour parking meter on East Sheridan. Again, that's in Ward Seven. Is there a motion? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 9E provides a definition for shuttle services. Cindy Richards is here to kind of lead us through this and explain why we need one.
Mayor, I'm going to ask Haley Rossin, who also advises the Traffic Commission, to step up and give you the details.
Good morning. This definition is coming before you today as a revision. It was originally coming before you last fall, and the industry actually asked the city to revise and invest a little bit more time in looking into what the company actually does. The city has met with local industry several times this spring and has redrafted the ordinance. Currently, the ordinance before you would allow the companies to go to and from the airport and also have written pre-arranged transmission or transportations.
Okay. So is there a motion on 9E? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you all. Item 9F, as council may recall, we went through a kind of a series of conversations with the operators of Lyft and Uber about a year ago, and in the meantime, they have gone to the state and gotten state law that kind of supplants the local ordinances that we had put into place. And so as staff typically does when state has trumped their local resolutions, this ordinance would basically do away with the local ordinances that we put in last year and put us in compliance with state law. Is there a motion? All right, cast your votes on 9F. It passes unanimously.
Mayor, I'd just like to comment a little bit on that. I just can't let it go by. I mean, what, what is this about? I mean, what is it about people that are in the legislature that think they're, you know, they've been there 30 minutes, and they think they're smarter than we are about how to run our city? This is just one more example of preemption. It's just ridiculous. I mean, I, somebody needs to understand, to, to explain to them the definition of the word "local." I mean, they believe "local" is 23rd and Lincoln, and it's not. I mean, we've been running taxi services and regulating this kind of business for 100 years. We've been doing the same thing with a number of other things, and it, I'm just, I, it was just an absolute pet peeve of mine that they, that they seem to have the arrogance just to, the next item on, on the agenda is, is, concerns dilapidated housing. And after we spent all the time trying to figure out a way to regulate dilapidated housing for Oklahoma City, they passed something that preempts what we do and we have to start over. I mean, it just goes on and on and on and on. I, I, the, the bill that was before the legislature to provide us with a, with the ability to give a local preference was well-written. It couldn't possibly have cost the taxpayers a nickel to do it. And in the Governor's veto message, that did pass the legislature, but the Governor's veto message contained language like cronyism and corruption. I mean, what is that about? What, what is that about? I mean, it looks like to me they've got their hands full with cronyism and corruption. They don't need to be talking about what we're doing. I just think we've got to, at some point, find a way. Maybe it's get people to vote differently, but somehow, rather, we've got to find a way to take back control of running cities. Either that, or we just need to abdicate the responsibility to them and let them, in their infinite wisdom, do it. The, the bill that they passed to quote "give back" end quote, the Indian Native American Cultural Center, is a joke. I mean, the idea that they have not done what they promised to do, and they're going to shove it back on us in the manner that they did, and I've been an advocate for taking it back, but not in the, not this way. I mean, the rest of you maybe think that it'll get worse if we, if we stand up to them. Hell, I don't see how it can get any worse. I mean, how's it going to get worse than this? How's it going to get worse? Virtually every time we try to do something that regulates an industry that has the power of the dollar bill to go after the legislature and try to change it, it stopped. I just think at some point, somebody besides me's got to stand up and scream about that. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe, maybe we ought to be content to just be pushed around this way, but I don't think so.
Nobody's in Nobody's interrupting you.
Can I just add, and I certainly agree with everything you said, including everything, including the Indian Cultural Center, which I certainly wouldn't be able to support anything similar to what the legislature proposed. But I'd be curious if the state representatives and senators from Oklahoma City are voting for these preemption, or, I mean, do we at least have allies from those who represent Oklahoma City?
Some do. Some vote with us.
Is it consensus, or it's split, or do we know? Can we reach out to them at least to advocate for us? Try and form some?
I would sum it up this way. The rural legislators are better at voting as a block of rural legislators than the urban legislators are in Oklahoma City and Tulsa, as voting as a block of urban legislators. They typically fall along party lines instead of urban lines.
Right.
But every issue's different, so that's a general.
It's not so much partisanship as it once was. It is, I mean partisan by that I mean Democrat, Republican stuff. It's more.
But specifically on preemption and local rights, local control, is that falling on party lines, or is that urban versus rural, or is it split, or?
That seems more rural versus urban.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think the real key to understanding it is, look at who's got the money. Look where the money is. The money is the realtors go to the legislature, and all of a sudden, all the legislators are in favor of something that metropolitan Oklahoma City real estate people want. Now, why would that be? It isn't because they care about what happens with Sixton Kelly. It's because somehow they were put in a position where their reelection may be easier financially. And it goes on and on and on. The oil and gas industry is probably the biggest offender. The recent deal where we got to, where we can't now regulate oil and gas. We've been doing it since the '30s, but we can't do it anymore. I just think, you know, sometime we've got to stand up and say, we've had enough. I don't know how to do that other than...
We have a legislative committee meeting later this week, I believe. We'll get to it then. All right. Thanks for your comments, Pete. We're on item 9G. It's a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right, how about a motion?
Yeah.
A second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. 9H is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H?
Well, I wanted to speak on unsecured structures, but I don't know if I'm...
Yeah, come on up. We'll check it out. What's your name, please?
My name's Mike Brown. I'm a homeowner in South Oklahoma City, Ward 6.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay. All right, according to the clerk, because it's not on the agenda, you'll have to come back when we have citizens to be heard, so it'll be a little bit longer.
Later?
Yeah, a little bit longer.
Thank you.
We won't forget about you.
All right.
All right, did we get a motion and a second on unsecured? We need that. All right, cast your vote.
It passes unanimously.
And then item 9I is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Anyone here hoping to speak under any of this item? Any of these items?
Mayor, I need to correct a mistake that I made. I gave the right address, but I gave the wrong item number. The item that needed to be stricken was item L, 2561 Northwest 16th Street, and that was to re-notify the owner.
Okay. So, a motion on 9I? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9J is a second public hearing. Every year, we review our 3/4 cent public safety sales tax. Citizens voted in just over 25 years ago. And item 9J is the police department's portion of that sales tax. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right, how about a motion then to move this one on? This is 9J.
I move.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then item 9K is the second public hearing regarding the fire department's portion of the 3/4 cent public safety sales tax. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item? Cast your votes on 9K. It passed unanimously, and they both move forward. Item 9L is a resolution that would establish a sidewalk repair and replacement participation program. Here is Eric Winger to tell us more about this. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're pleased to bring back to you an item that actually arrived last summer as we did an introduction of a replacement and repair program for sidewalks across Oklahoma City. I'll let you know that a significant amount of work went into the past several months with a lot of staff, with Assistant City Engineer Debbie Miller, our Assistant Public Works Director Paul Bronson, several others on staff, including Shannon Cox, who's assisted with a lot of the public and some of the items you're going to see today. But it even went a little bit further, and what I'll show you at the end of the presentation is we've involved our IT department to the level that we've got an online application that will be part of the process if approved by the council as well. So, I want to extend an early appreciation to Lee DeMers with my department, Jason Ben Dunson, Deason, and Aaron Shook with IT. When we introduced this last summer, we have a background, some status, a resolution for your consideration today. There's some criteria for qualification, some eligibility for repairs. There's a construction procedure, and then I'll provide a brief summary. So, one of the things, I think, is we talk about sidewalks in Oklahoma City, and there's a number of sidewalk improvements that are well underway, but as we look and research our GIS, we have over 1,100 miles of sidewalk. Those include areas in residential and arterial all across Oklahoma City. We also have a number of projects that you see here on this map, and I know it's very small, but in all areas of the city, we are now implementing MAPS 3 work. There's 2007 bond issue work with all of the road widenings and residential resurfacing that are adding sidewalks. We have other projects as well. When we look at CBDG funds, when we look at some other associated projects like the fund balance, it's also been provided by the city council. So, there's 53 new miles of sidewalk that have been installed just since 2013. So, what occurs over time? Obviously, the sidewalks do deteriorate, and these are some of the pictures of what we're seeing in the field. There's just an aging sidewalk infrastructure with damage, heaving due to trees. Obviously, when you plant a tree small next to a sidewalk, and then it grows into its adult status, it does heave like you see on the photo on the left. We have some that just have basic settlement, but then some that deteriorate, that you see some cracking, and then other ADA issues, driveways that are installed that are not compliant for cross slope. So, for your consideration today, you do have a resolution that's included in your packet. This came as a part of research. Norman and Edmund already have programs in place, so we've modeled it after that. But what the resolution provides for is a 50/50 cost share between the city of Oklahoma City and a private property owner. And so, the funding percentage is at 50%. To get the program started, we suggested entering into $100,000 for this upcoming year to be used against that as a matching fund. And then we've set aside some policies and procedures to actually be followed, and I'll kind of outline those here in just a minute of what those would be. Our office, Public Works, would be the ones responsible for the review, so field services, inspectors that do a lot of our construction reviews in the field already, would be the ones that would review the conditions and make sure that we had criteria that were applicable, and then we would work directly with the homeowners at that point. So, these are the eligibility criteria, either differential settlement, horizontal cracks, or missing or deteriorated sidewalk. This does not provide for new sidewalks that don't already exist, so this is a replacement program or repair program. When we look at differential settlement, these are some of the examples that you'll see, and so what we have set as the standard is there has to be at least a 1-inch difference in the settlement of a sidewalk for it to become eligible. Obviously, these create trip hazards. Some of the things that we could get into is tree removals and stump grindings. There's also some technologies where we can raise a settled area without actually having to completely remove a sidewalk. But in most cases, we would be either doing a partial or a complete replacement in conditions like this. On the next one, we have horizontal cracking that occurs, and the mark that we have here is that it's going to have to be an inch and a half in separation before it will actually qualify. Obviously, concrete does crack, and minor cracks are serviceable, but in this case, these are going to require partial or complete replacements as well. And then the last one, we have just missing sections or deteriorated sidewalks. And this is where we find that sections have just completely crumbled. A lot of times, we see a lot of grass and things that are growing up between them, but this will provide an opportunity for us to reconnect those existing sidewalks. They're either in neighborhoods or arterial areas. And those are some examples that you see in the two photos there at the right. So, there are some additional criteria, and this is also some things that just make sure that everybody's aware. I mean, obviously, the sidewalk program only applies to the corporate limits of the city of Oklahoma City. We are looking for fully improved, platted, and occupied residences to participate in the program. There are some terms and conditions of the program that we're setting aside. One of those will be that it meets the eligibility requirements, but we also have to make sure that the property owner's willing to fund the 50% portion before we're willing to do the work. So, it's going to require that they make that deposit before the work is performed. It has to be in a platted easement. Some sidewalk maintenance in Oklahoma City is actually responsibility of the homeowners association. So, those notes that we sometimes find on those plaits, the HOA has taken responsibility for those sidewalks, and those sidewalks would not be eligible for the Oklahoma City program. The owner provides the matching funds, and then the property would actually be dedicated back to the city for public use. We need to make sure that the sidewalks are open to the public if the city of Oklahoma City chooses to participate in the program. Again, we're going to be using Oklahoma City standards. We do require that there is a base material and that the concrete is poured to a minimum thickness. It has to also meet all of our ADA requirements. There are sprinklers that are probably going to be involved. There's, in some cases, also private property that's been installed really close to a lot of these sidewalks, and it's going to be the private property responsibility to actually take care of those two items. We're going to be responsible, as a city, for all the construction activities, but ultimately, once it's all complete, the responsibility for maintenance will go back to the property owner. So, this would be our goal, as we start to look at new sidewalks and new construction. These are just some of the photos of some of the things that we're starting to see with the different programs that are implemented. So, the sidewalk repair and replacement program would then continue to supplement the numerous other sidewalk programs that Oklahoma City has already undertaken. And following your consideration and approval today, we are prepared with an application. I know it's very small on the screen, but it is an online application that will allow our residents to go online at OKC.gov. We're ready to make that link available to them beginning tomorrow, but it will allow them to make that online application with a name and an address, with the understanding of the criteria that I just mentioned to you today. And then we have field services staff ready to go out and start doing those inspections to determine if they're eligible, and if such, we'll actually use our existing city contractors to perform the work. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions you might have about the program.
Does the neighborhood alliance know about this? I know that this is something that will probably need to be circulated through.
Yeah, we've actually met with George Urasco and just individual neighborhoods that have some interest in this as a program. So, it's been kind of a work in progress, but we're pleased to present it today as a completed product for your consideration.
So, she knows it's on our agenda, and it's starting tomorrow?
Absolutely. I think we're also prepared to issue press releases and things for the other neighborhood associations that may not be fully aware.
Okay.
Has any thought been given to financing it in the same way that street improvements are financed? I've got lots of older, middle to lower-income neighborhoods that could use sidewalks. They'll never be able to afford sidewalks if they have to pony up half the money in the beginning. If a system could be devised where you could use the Avroam tax system that we use on the rare occasions that people decide to pave roads and spread it out on their Avroam taxes, I think you'd have a lot more luck in neighborhoods that really need them, probably worse than some of the neighborhoods are going to be able to get them through this program.
So, again, I think on new sidewalks, I think we can look at some opportunities like that. I know as we project into the 2017 bond issue, we're already looking for ability for the future bond to do maybe sidewalk-only projects, but this isn't for new.
I'm talking about this kind of a proposal, not a proposal where the city spends all of it, a proposal where the city pays half of it, but use the system. I know, I'm repeating myself, I know. I understand that. But it seems to me that that would be a way for lower-income neighborhoods to be able to afford to do it. Otherwise, the neighborhoods that could probably afford to do it without the 50% match are going to be the only ones that do it.
Let me investigate some opportunities for another new sidewalk-type program, I think, maybe is what I'm hearing you ask. And this one is more for just, again, just for those replacements and repairs to the existing infrastructure. So, this one doesn't anticipate a brand-new build of sidewalks in areas that aren't.
I can take you to a number of neighborhoods that had sidewalks that couldn't afford to pay for 50% of the new, and because the people are retired, and it's a lower-income neighborhood now. I'm just suggesting it might be a way to more effectively use this and spread it into neighborhoods that are not able to come up with the 50% upfront. You eliminate most of the neighborhoods in my ward just by doing that.
Well, let me...
Not that they wouldn't pay for it. They just can't, they couldn't come up with the 50% on the front side.
So, Pete, I think, yeah, we've talked about that a little bit with regard to Miller Neighborhood and a couple of others where we might do a special improvement district, I think is what you're talking about, where they could pay it over 20 or 30 years on their tax assessment.
Like an assessment.
Like an assess, special assessment district.
It may be that the projects are small enough that those paving projects, where they're hundreds of thousands of dollars most of the time, and this may be so small, and maybe the overhead of doing that would prohibit it, but I'd certainly like to see it looked at.
You know, the real intent of this program is those two or three or four sidewalk panels that are cracked in front of a residence have an opportunity to be replaced, and the costs can vary from, say, $25 to $50 a linear foot, depending on the complexity. But, you know, we're hoping to make the program like this affordable for those that just need a few panels replaced that have been deteriorated over time.
I need to step in the right direction. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
In researching this resolution, the one thing I discovered was that my predecessor, Pat Ryan, was a big proponent of this, and so I wanted to recognize his work, and I also wanted to move for approval.
All right. I have, I'm sorry. I didn't know we were going that fast. Can we, as a council, consider replenishing this fund if we go through it before the end of the year? I mean, I think this is a great idea, and we may get a stronger response than what's initially anticipated. So, I'd like for at least the council to begin thinking at some point in time to possibly replenish the $100,000.
Why don't we ask for, can you give us an update within an appropriate time? Six months?
Absolutely.
Or if you're getting close to running out of the fund.
Six months from now, we could find out if we're out, or, you know, maybe we could see the citizen's response.
And could you put your PowerPoint presentation on the city's website to discuss, you know, the rules, to allow the citizens to determine whether or not they'll qualify?
Yeah, we're going to be happy to. And the information, once they log in, it's actually more than just the one form that I've showed here. It actually has all of the requirements. There's an agreement that's actually signed. There's the ability, again, to have them make those deposits. So, there's a little more paperwork than what I'm showing you here to actually make that.
Oh, that's fine. I just...
We'll be happy to.
But your presentation was really well-done, and I think it's easy to follow, so if we could get the actual PowerPoint presentation linked in somehow to our website.
The pictures help.
Okay. Yeah, we'll be happy to do that.
And then finally, you mentioned that we currently have about 1,100 miles of sidewalks throughout the city. If most of the residential areas were sidewalk, would that be 20,000, 50,000 miles? Any rough guess?
You know, so we have about 8,000 lane miles of roadway in the city total. I didn't do the percentage, so I just don't know, but...
No, that's fine. It's a big number. Thank you.
All right, ready to vote on item 9L. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9M is a follow-up from an item that we passed during the PPA. This had to do with the issuing the bonds on the fairgrounds. So, how about a motion to move this forward? Cast your votes on 9M. It passed unanimously. Item 9N, O, and P reflect that we are at the end of our fiscal year, and we have routine extensions in order, and so these are the three organizations that we have labor contracts with. So, item 9N is to continue the contract with the, let's see, is this police? That's fire. No, it's ASME. Okay. ASME is first, then police, and then fire. So 9N would continue the contract with ASME. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9O is continuing the contract with the police. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 9P is to continue the item with firefighters.
Are we going into executive session today?
We are.
Yes. Could I just ask Phil, because I see Phil's here, can I just ask you a quick question before we go?
Let's ask Francis if we can do that.
Can I do that?
Well, it's related to the extension of the collective bargaining agreement.
I think it is. Phil? Okay. Phil, this is what I was going to ask. So there's some question of fire coming back on the insurance. We're getting ready to go to every other week meetings, so there's less time to work with. I presume that you would have to get this all figured out before the open enrollment period, which I'm not sure exactly when that is.
Yes, we did discuss that at the bargaining table, and I think there is a consensus that we would need to get our contract for 1516 completely done in order for firefighters to be able to go through open enrollment, the insurance open enrollment provided, you know, there's an agreement at the table for the firefighters to come back on the city insurance plans.
So how much time do we have to figure this out if we're going to do it?
Well, I think that might be a question for management, more so than it is for me. I would think we probably need to get it done hopefully by the middle of August, because there is some time elements there for the bargaining unit to be able to go out to the membership, present the contract, vote on it, and then have it come before council and have council vote on the contract after that. So there's several weeks there that it's going to take to get all that done. So, and it needs to be completely done from our perspective, and I think the city agrees with that prior to open enrollment.
When is open enrollment?
I'm assuming it's generally in October, towards the very end of October, last week or so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Phil. All right, we need a motion on 9P. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9Q is an opportunity to enter into executive session to discuss our labor negotiations, and we do need executive session on this item.
Yes, we do.
So how about a motion to move 9Q to executive session?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9R, I understand we do need executive session on this item?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to move that one into executive session? It passed unanimously. Item 9S, we're also going into executive session, so a motion to move 9S into executive session. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 9T, we are also going into executive session, so a motion to move 9T into executive session. Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. 9U, we do not need executive session, so a motion to strike would be in order. Cast your votes. That item is struck from the agenda. Item 9V is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9V? Yeah, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kevon Pressy. I was involved in an accident on April 1st in a construction area that wasn't barricaded properly off of Reno close to Rockwell. In addition, where I went to the hospital and sustained some injuries. In conclusion, I had talked to Ms. Amy Harrison, who was very helpful in giving me the information that I need. She's the one that made me aware of the case today, well, the meeting today, to plead to you all about seeing if I can get compensated due to the fact that there was no insurance on my behalf, just personal insurance, and the car that I was in, they did not cover me as far as in the accident. So I do have, I don't know if she presented you all with the accident reports or my lien that I have as far as in my medical bills, as far as in that. She did show me information regarding how it was barricaded off. The police was called, came out there. I wasn't cited as far as in a citation for failure to yield a detour sign. There wasn't a detour sign. The road closed sign was there, but it was knocked over, and there were no cones indicating that the right lane was closed.
Okay.
There was a 30-foot sinkhole across all of Reno, right before Rockwell. The car, which was a 2012 Toyota Corolla Fit in the sinkhole, and the whole car was totaled out, which was my friend's car.
What about your injuries? How serious were they?
I received just a clotus into my elbow, which was swollen. I do stocking at Walmart, so I was put out of work. I do go to school, so I had to miss time from school, things of that nature. I also had a clotus to my lip. It took some of my hair out. I had more hair at the time, and thank God for airbags. And it was a situation where I guess no one knew about it prior to, because we did have storms that night. So I tried to get a lawyer to see about just any information that I could get in regards to the case, and they were telling me things of due diligence and things of that nature could have been an act of God. But like I was telling Ms. Harrison, I just want to be compensated if possible just for my medical bills, because they have a lien out against me in regards to the medical bills, so.
Let's see what our options are. Tina, can you help us figure this one out?
The city had been out there twice on the day this, well, before this happened, since this was about 4:00 in the morning. Is that correct? And we had been there most recently at 10:05 PM this day, which is six hours before that. City employee inspected and secured the work zone by resetting 10 cones and two barricades and by recovering eight cones that had been damaged by traffic. Prior to that, we'd put up 50 cones, five barricades, five signs, 10 sandbags at or near the work zone. So we knew there was a hole there. We warned people like crazy. As he notes, the weather was really bad. We had been out there at 10 o'clock to check all of the stuff and set it back up. After 10 o'clock, we had no notice that there's anything down, and that's a really low-traffic time, so.
What does state law guide us to do in this situation? Are there any restrictions that we need to be aware of?
State law says that if there's a danger like that, and we know that it's there, we should warn about it, which we did. We also probably have, we have a continuing duty to come back and check the area again and again, which we did twice that day.
Right.
So I don't, we do not see how the city violated any duty it owned to the traveling public. And then there was the additional really bad weather blowing things down all over town, so.
Yeah, and I didn't catch the address of where this took place, what part of the city was.
It was in between McArthur and Rockwell, right near the Walmart/Home Depot area.
On Northwest Express?
On West Reno.
On West Reno.
Oh, okay.
But my whole defense to that is, if that was indicating a detour, there was no markings letting people know that to use the center lane to detour to go on the opposite road to come back around. The sinkhole was all across the road, and I was able to drive down the right lane to get to the sinkhole. The left lane had cones after the road closed sign. There were no cones or no road closed sign in the right lane. I was able to drive all the way down to the sinkhole with no hitting no cones or anything, and the diaphragm in the police report shows that when the police showed out. And also, my defense is, if I had hit anything proving that I was negligent to follow the signs, I would have been cited. I didn't get any citation at all showing that I obeyed my any signs. So that's another reason why I just don't understand why I'm in the motion to be denied.
Yeah, how much money are we talking about here? I don't see an amount on here. $3,000?
Yes.
$3,000.
That's chiropractor. And like I said, I did miss time from work, but I don't have that figured out. But if I could just get my medical bills paid, that's, you know, that's fair enough for me.
Yeah. Tina, has he submitted the proper documentation to get this on the list? Because there's no dollar amount on the agenda.
That's because we didn't have any documentation. Subsequent to that, the filing of the claim, we did receive, I have a medical lien in here that we received from Accident Care and Treatment Center that came in June 1st that shows a medical lien in the amount of $3,339.2. I also have a medical lien from Southwest Regional Imaging and Radiology.
Okay. Kenny, it sounds like there might be some discretion here on the side of council. Do you agree with that?
Yes, I think council could determine that there's a reason to settle this claim with the claimant, and we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, weather circumstances, you know, you kind of have to take it on a case-by-case basis, because I remember some of those weather nights, and I can imagine if we hadn't been out since 10 o'clock and it's 4:00 in the morning, and this was a significant sinkhole, this might be an extraordinary circumstance. Nonetheless, I don't see how we can approve a payment that we don't know what it is. So here's what I'm going to suggest. If you will work with staff and try to get, you know, the dollar amount that you think you deserve, then we can kind of review it with that in mind. It's hard for me to say yes or no, or speaking for myself, much less the council, without knowing what dollar amount we're talking about. And there might also be some legal paperwork that would not allow it to go further or having, you know, other charges come down the line later.
Yes.
So is that all right, Tina?
Sure.
If you'll just continue to work with Tina, and that'll come back to council, you may or may not have to come down here again.
Okay.
Kind of depending on your decision. Yeah, Mark?
One question. Do we have any tort claim issues here that are still pending, or the potential for that?
Against the city?
Yes.
Yes, he could, I mean, if we deny his claim, he can file a tort claim over in district court and try to recover that as a.
Even if we settle with him on his medicals, does he still have the potential for filing?
No, no. When we do a settlement, there'll be a confession of right.
Okay, thank you.
And a release.
How many visits to the chiropractor did you?
I have that list here. They put me out of work, excuse me. It started on, it ended May 18th, and it started, let's see, I returned to work on April the 17th with limited, a lot of restrictions, rather.
So I'm just wondering, how many visits for that $3,000?
I would have to, I would have to get that.
Okay.
We have no idea, because.
I would have to get that. It started, like I said, it started, he put me, returned to work on the 17th. It started on the 17th, actually. The first date was on the 17th, and it went to the 18th, but it wasn't every day of the week.
Mr. Pressy, what was the date of the accident?
It was the 1st of April.
Okay. It's with the delay in getting all of your medical bills, you may still receive those through the end of June or even July, so I think it's wise to go through this process of working with staff to try to make sure you get.
Well, I contacted them prior, because like I said, Ms. Harrison, Ms. Amy Harrison was very helpful in letting me know of the date, and I've been, we've been coinciding with each other on dates and stuff like that. So I have all my medical bills, and that's how she was able to get the lien.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
We're sorry for your troubles. We need a motion to strike this item from the claims recommended for denial?
Move the item.
All right, this is a motion to strike item 9V1B, and it is struck. Okay, now we need a motion on claims recommended for denial, the rest of the list.
Move the item.
Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item 10? All right, how about a motion? Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Now we're ready for items from council. James, do you have anything for us? Okay, Ed?
I'm just still working on, sorry, the same question I mentioned last week, and that I meant ask for help with the Economic Development Trust maybe three or four weeks prior. That's just, still just trying to understand the TIF financing. I still haven't got an answer, and I'm not sure who can help me with this, because it doesn't seem. The question's very simple. In terms of TIF financing, if you divert money away from I-89 public schools, does the legislature then reimburse I-89? Yes or no? That's the only, I can't find an answer to that question, and I don't know who to go to, or I don't know if I need the help of the media, or just someone, if somebody can tell me where to go to find that answer, I'd be very grateful, but I'm finding it difficult to formulate policy without knowing the answer to that question. Thanks.
All right, Larry?
Two things. Last Saturday, the Friends of 10th Street put on a great neighborhood event at the Rock Center for the neighbors out there. Ken Couchman, Megan, and Betty Gordon were out there. They had a good crowd. They were giving out shoes for people that needed shoes, or activities for the kids, and it was just a great family event that went on. Then this Saturday, they are also sponsoring, in cooperation with our parks and with our MAPS people, the opening of the West Trail. And there's publicity out on that. Kristi Jaeger asked me to make an announcement, so please, check your webpage for that. It'll run from about 9:00 in the morning to about 1:00 or 1:30 in the afternoon. There are free hot dogs that are going to be served by the West 10 people. There's going to be entertainment for the kids. There's going to be a bike ride from 10th Street down into the Crystal Lake area. There's going to be a bike ride for the kids, and it's going to be a great way to open up this MAPS 3 initiative this coming Saturday, starting at about 9:00 and going to about 1:30. Thank you, Your Honor.
Looking forward to it. Pete?
To avoid the risk of being overly more redundant than I normally am, I'm going to pass today.
All right. Okay, David? Meg?
I had a really great presentation last week at the Linwood Neighborhood Association by one of our police officers, and it's this great program called Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Just superb, and I think there's so many things that we could do with that. I'm not sure, the presentation took a long time. It would be hard to do here, but I kind of would encourage any council that hasn't seen it to take a look at it. Maybe we could do that even in a workshop or something. It was just very interesting of how, you know, everything from how a homeowner manages, you know, landscaping and lighting, and to using public art projects on utility boxes and on dumpsters and things to improve neighborhood safety and security. It was very well done. Our officer was as enthusiastic about a program as I've ever seen. It was really well done. And I just wanted to remind folks, this is a Ward 7 project, but Curiosity, Curio City opened at the Science Museum this weekend, and I had a chance to go through it before it was 100% finished. It's absolutely fantastic, so take your families out to the Science Museum of Oklahoma. It is a great, great exhibit. Thank you, Mayor.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My prayers and support goes out to Mother Emanuel AME Church. For those who don't know, nine people were tragically killed inside their church, and so my prayers goes out to Emanuel and also South Carolina, I believe. South Carolina leaders are making, they're making the right steps to do what's right, and that is to take down the Confederate flag. Thank you.
Mark?
My thoughts and prayers go out to Bob Berry Jr.'s family. What a tragic loss.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, city manager reports.
Yes, Mayor and council, we have two city manager reports. First one is a timeline for the body worn camera program. As most of you will recall, we had outlined a program but ran into some concerns with the Open Records Act. We were successful this legislative session to get some changes made to the act that will allow us to proceed with the program, and so the memo before you will kind of give you some dates that we're shooting for, for implementation of the pilot program. The next report we have is the June 2015 sales tax and sales and use tax report, and I'm pleased to announce to you this morning that our sales tax for the year came in almost on target. We only fell 0.02% short of the city's estimate for our sales tax for the year. The sales tax actually grew 3% for the year over strong numbers seen in 2014. Retail, which accounts for approximately 50% of our sales tax, grew at only 1.4% rate for the year. The use tax actually declined for the last few months of the year, ending the year at 1.7 million or 3.6% below target. So we had a pretty good year.
Pretty much on target for what we expected, but 3% growth all in all?
Yes.
We should, I think that's pretty good.
Have you chosen a vendor for the body cameras?
No, sir, we haven't. We are scheduled to do vendor presentations. We have five vendors that will be presenting to us during the month of July.
All right, citizens. And then the ones that we select are going to, they're going to be tested, right?
Right. Whichever one we select, then we will issue to officers. I believe we have 150 camera pilot program that we will be doing.
All right, Mike Brown.
Yeah.
Mike, thanks for your patience. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Mike Brown, 4304 Rancho Drive, South Oklahoma City, Ward 6. Mayor, council, mayor, thank you for hearing me. This is my first time, okay?
We don't bite.
I'll try to relax a little bit. Pete, I heard you a while ago. I'm with you. My concerns is vacant property, of course, absent or non-responsive property owners, and property owners who neglect, offend the nuisance code of Oklahoma City. and property owners who neglect, offense the nuisance code of Oklahoma City. And just one case in point I just want to bring out is the 1400 Magnolina Drive. It's right near me. I have to look at it. It offends me. It's a rotten apple in a fairly, in a nice neighborhood. I like my house. I like where I live. I like my neighbors. I don't want to move. The neighbors are also concerned. I talk to the neighbors. You know, I'm part of the Neighborhood Watch Association. Well, we hope to do more. And so anyway, it's becoming nuisance because of tall grass in the backyard. The reason it doesn't have tall grass in the front yard is because I mowed it. I got permission through the council and through the city, and they, and the city appreciates it. Broken glass, unsecured, and it has signs of illegal occupancy, and brush growth that obscures vision. And so, and it has six pages of complaints against it, and probably four of those are mine. But still, what I have done is, like I said, I've gotten permission from the city and from the council. I don't, I'm not going to do anything illegal here. And so I mowed the front, me and the neighbors have mowed the front lawn, and we're going to manicure it and make it look nice. Okay? But what I'd like to do is to, I'd like to cut the chain and get into the backyard, because it's chained up, and I'd like to knock down the weeds that are this tall, which have never, in those six pages, have ever been dealt with. And so, and secure the house. This is, these are the two things I'd like to do. What I'd like, what I'd like the city to do is give me some backing.
Charles, why don't you come up and see what relief we can provide here, based on what you've heard in the last minute and a half?
Well, it's a problem house. It went through a foreclosure. From my understanding, it's, the foreclosure's been cleared off of it. So it has the owner that's owned it since about, I think, 2001. We've worked it several, several times. We secured this property back in January. Looks like there was some illegal entry from the back part of the property, rear door, maybe a sliding door in a, in like a, oh, garden room or something. So we've had several instances. We are currently working a property maintenance case. Citations have been issued. We're scheduled to go back July 12th for a second round. If the problem has not been taken care of, of course, we'll start another round of citations through our municipal court. It looks like we are working a grass complaint already. In fact, it's due for the schedule for a second inspection today. Our inspector will be out there, and we'll send it to a contractor, and the city contractor will cut whatever. We usually go over the whole yard again, but...
Even the backyard?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll cut the backyard, too. It's a chain link, I believe, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, no, it's a locked fence.
It's a chain link. I was out there last week. It's got some problems. The PM, it's got like a, mostly it's overhangs, eaves and overhangs. There's some deterioration of the overhang. Looks like there's an add-on, needs paint.
Can we reflect that we're doing everything we can within state law to aggressively move this for the rest of the neighborhood?
Yes. I mean, we're within inside the ordinance, right.
Charles, I think the frustration on the part of Mike and the neighbors is how long it's taking us...
Oh, yeah.
...to get through this process. And I've got the pages of complaints here, and there are lots of them, from everything from tall weed and grass to deterioration in property maintenance issues. Has it been on our dilapidated list yet?
It's not really dilapidated, simply because it's not structurally unsound enough to warrant that. It's been, it's on our unsecured...
Has it been unsecured?
Yes, it's been on unsecured. We secured it in January from a complaint, from the, looks like somebody kicked in a rear door.
Mike, is it unsecured now?
No, it is unsecured.
So are we going to go back and...
It is actually unsecured.
Yes, that's, we've got, we actually, it's probably from Mr. Brown. We have another complaint on it that's scheduled to be inspected this week on it for the, for that unsecured. I mean, we're not going to stop people from breaking into it, I mean, just because it's vacant.
What is the ownership? Is it local ownership, or is it out of state?
Well, it shows an in-state owner. It shows a post office box that where he's either receiving it or not, but it shows to be a post office box.
So at some level, if we're issuing citations, this is going to escalate to an abandoned property?
Yes.
Yes?
It's up for auction next July. I have the docket number. Yeah, so anyway, can I say my summary, please?
You bet.
Yeah. This property, along with others in our neighborhood, offends the nuisance laws of Oklahoma City. The ordinance gives me, or others offended the right, as I read it, to peacefully abate the situation and to file a civil suit against these homes. We intend on working to get public support, and I say "we," I talk about, I'm not by myself here. It's not just the Neighborhood Watch Association, but others also. And we intend on working to get public support, along with businesses and churches. Actually, we are in close relation with St. James Catholic Church, so as to proactively increase the overall appearance of our neighborhood. And we would like, we would like to join hands with the city during this somehow, some way. The, we just want to take care of the problem, and I'm tired of waiting on the city, basically, because it's been, it's been time after time after time after time, nothing, nothing, just very little gets done. And I realize that the city has to jump through so many hoops. I realize that legally, yeah. But, but, you know, but we don't have to jump through any hoops.
And Mike, you do need, we've got legal issues, because it is private property, so...
Yes, I know, but the owner has been, 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 tried to contact time after time after time after time, and he doesn't respond. It's unresponsive. So, you know, according to the business laws, I have the right to abate, and I can do it peaceably, because he doesn't respond.
Kenny, how do you interpret that, please?
Certainly, he could file a private nuisance case, or the Neighborhood Association could attempt to file a private nuisance case in district court, but you, you have to have some type of legal authorization to do something to the property. You can't just go on there yourself based on the ordinance and do something. I would advise you not to do that. But you have to go to district court.
District court.
Right, the Oklahoma County Court.
Could you help us on this?
Yeah, would you let me know when your next neighborhood meeting is?
It's, we have it every, the first Tuesday of every month.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we just need some help.
Okay. I've got your phone number.
Anyway, I wanted to let my voice be heard.
I'm glad you did, and I'm sorry we aren't moving as briskly as you think we should, and it sounds like we've been, we've hesitated, but it sounds like you're willing to work with us, and on behalf of the neighbors, please pass along our sympathies, and it sounds like Councilwoman Salyer's going to get you some information before your next neighborhood meeting, and Charles is going to move as aggressively as he legally can. All right.
Let me ask one question about this. And this goes on for, say, 12 months, 18 months, 24 months. Does the city ever foreclose upon its lien, try to get the owner to take some action?
The liens for dilapidated buildings and unsecured structures are actually certified. The process is it's certified to the county treasurer's office, and if it goes unpaid, then they essentially do a tag sale on it, is the way usually we collect it.
So we have the ability to get the owner's attention at some point?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Charles, thanks.
Mr. Brown, just one comment, because I drive through your neighborhood all the time. I went to elementary school there at Rancho Village, but continued to go to church over in that area. And if Councilwoman Salyer could put some pressure on improving the streets in your neighborhood, there are some severe problems along 43rd Street and some of the other streets within your neighborhood. So if we can't solve this problem, at least perhaps we can make the streets a little bit more drivable in that area.
All right. Mike, thanks. Yeah, I saw your hand go up. Come on up. Uh huh. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Scott Buxton. I live at 1442 Northwest 36th Street. I serve on the Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as the commit, Oversight Committee for Trails and Sidewalks from MAPS 3. It's interesting that I should come to the meeting today and enjoy Councilman White's comments with regard to the legislature, as well as the presentation from Eric Wagner. We, that was something that we came up when we initially began discussing sidewalks and the sidewalk committee, is how can we can help people to repair their sidewalks? So I'm just thrilled to see that happen. I will probably be the first applicant. So when I get home, well, probably tomorrow, I will be on the site to find that out. But let's see, yes. And the reason I came here this morning is at Councilman Shadie's suggestion.